In this we pray, amen.
Amen.
So again, I know you've had a chance to review the packet and so if there are no corrections or additions, we'll go ahead and have the minutes stand as a group.
I just had one minor correction in the comments that I made. I misspoke and said August 14th for the primary. It should say August 4th is the primary. So everybody should go out on August 4th and vote.
Okay. So any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Kate with that, go ahead and stand with that one correction. So now we have a public time for public comment. We are, we have about 30 minutes for this and again, remember that if you have a public comment, please come to the podium, state your name, and then also remember you have five minutes. So if there is anyone with public comment, we would invite you to come at this time. Seeing there we have none, we can go ahead and go on to the considerations of petitions, memorial, and remonstrances.
Mayor and Commissioners, Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Mayor and Stewart, Garden City Recreation Commission, under Code Section 6-35 and 6-133 to allow possession, consumption, and sale of cereal and malt beverages with alcoholic liquors during the Siege 5K obstacle course on Saturday, August 15th, 2020, at 305, or 3502 North Campus Drive.
And this is what we've done before in the past.
Correct.
Is this their second, second time they're holding the siege?
I think they've held the siege for a few years. I think in the format.
That I noticed. Kate, with that correction, is there any addition, other additions? Now, do we need to vote to accept that correction? Okay, so that correction will be there, thank you.
Thank you.
If not, we're going to move into public comment. So we've scheduled 30 minutes for this time. Again, you, we asked you to have five minutes per spokesperson, and if you will, if you'll come to the mic, which is in the center, if you'll state your name, and again, limit your comments to five minutes, but we always love hearing from the public. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up public comment. So seeing none in the room, do we have any online that we need to pay attention to, Jamie? Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and we'll move on, moving on to the consideration of petitions, memorial, and remonstrances.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Genesis Family Health to allow the mayor to proclaim August 9th through 15th as National Health Center Week in Garden City, Kansas.
So again, we have a.
I make the motion to approve that the proclamation is presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sessna. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Dick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. What I'll do is I'll contact Genesis to see if there's a place that'd like me to read the proclamation, but it's some really great information. So I just want to thank you for, again, remembering that this was National Health Center Week, and we are very fortunate to have one in our area, so, thank you.
We're ready for Item 7A now. Mayor and Commissioners, this is the report of the city manager. There's no formal presentations today, but there are some written presentations from department directors in your packets. If you've got any questions on those, we'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
I just noticed in the police report that the interdiction of heroin is up in our community quite considerably, but, which is kind of an alarming sign, and I know it has been increasing. I know, and also noticed training, training's down just a little bit slightly, but that's probably due to the COVID pandemic where we can't have additional trainings and stuff. Also, I noticed under the organizational study that they're keeping that up to date. We've approved a number of things and it has, and it's reflected in that organizational study, so, good job.
And Chief, I know you've had to make some hard decisions as far as what to do. I know Explorers was one of those programs that you've had to suspend due to the COVID, and so I know that you've been making some hard decisions and making sure that your officers are safe and also the community, so.
Yeah, it's, with the Explorers, we hadn't come back and then we had to suspend their activities. Just keep it, those that are required to be at the LAC, and it's been tough, and it's been tough for the kids on the Explorer program because they want to really get out there and engage with this. They've been very patient with us and we're still trying to do things, but.
We appreciate that.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
That's right. I did notice on the sales tax that is down, I mean, I was, again, expecting something larger, so I'm surprised that Garden City seems to be doing well on sales tax continuing.
But year-to-date, it's only down 51%.
Yeah, I was.
Not 51%.
Or not 51%, $51,000.
Exactly, yeah.
Not 51%.
And they, sorry, salad, a little over.
Yeah, 51%, that would be like, that would, yeah.
That would be quite shocking, yeah.
No, it's, year-to-date, it's down 51,000 compared to where we were at last year. So, again, you're right, Mayor, it's, it's good to see that.
Yeah, I was surprised.
I mean, where we see in the news and other places where they're struggling, and you know, we had the report last week, or at the last commission meeting, about downtown getting new businesses and opening new businesses, and it's, that's great to see in our community, so.
You know, and I know I encourage you, I mean, to shop local if you can, and if you can't find that, then there are other options, but it's a lot of fun. I know local businesses, I'll tell you, our service in local businesses is tremendous. I was down this last weekend at the sidewalk sale, that was a lot of fun, and bought things I wouldn't normally buy because I was in the store, so I have to be careful. Set a budget, that's all I'm going to say, so, to that, so. If there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and move on to, anything else on your, on reports, Matt, that you want to point out?
No. I think we're ready for the consideration of the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, that would be ordinance number 2512-2020A.
I'll make the motion to approve ordination number 2512-2020A.
So we have a motion to approve the appropriation ordinance? Do we have a second?
Second.
So a second by Commissioner Dick? So any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries four to one. Thank you.
Mayor, just for, I think it passed four to zero, and so.
Four to zero, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I heard four to one earlier, and then I guess my mind just picked that, four to zero. Thank you, yeah, we don't want to mistake in that, yeah.
I think now, 10A, first business item, this is a consideration of an ordinance, the governing body has asked to approve an ordinance rezoning from GC, which is the General Commercial District, and to, out in the county, to C2, which is the General Commercial District in the city, for the property located at 3455 East Highway 50 in Garden City. And if approved, it would be number?
2870.
Carol?
Very good. Matt, if we could go to the larger map, it's just always easier to see what we're talking about. Hopefully, I guess it's, the next one, right after this page, be the, yep, there we go. Okay, so, it's kind of hard to tell on this map because it's outdated, but the Loves is right there where it shows a blank field, the new Loves is there, right off of Highway 50 and Harvest Street. They always planned on putting in a truck stop to the east of where they were developed, but now that they're getting ready to do that, they realized they didn't have enough land, so they went ahead and purchased the property at 3455, the El Magway Restaurant, and I don't know if I said that right, but, I did it. So anyway, they purchased that land, it's already been annexed, and they're just going through the next step, which is to get it zoned into a proper city zoning. So we did present this to the planning commissioners, planning commission meeting the last time in, just, let's see, July 16th, they did recommend approval based off of the amendment criteria that's in your packet. Staff does recommend approval as well. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions for Carol? I really appreciate the work of the planning commission, I wanted to say that I think they had some really good discussion, and I, that you included, that was great. Any questions or comments? So, also open for a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 2870-2020.
So Commissioner Ortiz moves, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Sessna seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Four to zero.
Item, Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance annexing a .089 acre parcel generally located east of Jenny Barker Road and south of US Highway 5400 between Empirical Foods, Inc. and Wind River Grain Properties. If approved, this would be ordinance 2871-2020.
Okay.
Carol?
Continuing on with what we have today, this is an annexation. Empirical Foods, as you know, is planning on developing out there right off of Highway 50. They wanted to give themselves an opportunity to expand their driveway into their business as well as room for utilities. This is a, if you see on the map, it's a very small sliver of land, just under an acre total, so that's what this piece of land is for. They purchased it from Wind River, now are going through the annexation process, and then we'll be coming back with a rezoning plat for the whole, they want to put all of their development on one plat, and I'll have it in the city, so, that's what we're here for. Your options are to approve this annexation as proposed, or you can deny it, or you can table it if you'd like.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2871-2020.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Sessna, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dick. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes four to zero.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to building codes for the fire protection of floors and kitchen electrical outlets. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2872-2020. Carol?
Okay, hello again.
Carol, thank you for being here today.
I feel like a broken record right now, but, this one's a little bit more in-depth than those other two. Chapter 18 is our building codes, and we have our Building Safety Board of Appeals, who have met frequently in the last year, kind of going over that, over that, because we just adopted the new code in September of last year. There was a lot of items they wanted to get on there. We were back here a few months ago picking up one of the items that they didn't get on, in there. We're here today for the same reason. There are two, these two items were items that they did want to get on here, but they just kind of got overlooked when we went to pass it. The first one I'll talk about is the R302, and that's the International Residential Code. This is fire protection of floors. This request is to delete this entire section. This section has to do with, when you build a house, this is just for single and, single family and two-family homes. When you build a home and you put an unfinished basement below it, our old code, you didn't have to put sheet rock on the ceiling, but the new 2018 code is requiring that, that's to slow down fire from the basement. The board did meet several times on this, to discuss this. They felt that there's, there's kind of two issues with this one. They felt, number one, we do require to have stairwells completely sheet rocked, completely closed off, they felt like that was a good fire protection. They felt like it would, would be very costly, because when the homeowner goes in and they want to complete their basement, basically, they're going to have to take that sheet rock down to put in the electrical, to put in the HVAC, to put in plumbing, and then put a whole new sheet rock back up there. So they felt like rocking the lid, which is a builder's term, which I learned, which is kind of cool.
Yeah, that is cool.
That to rock the lid was not necessarily, they felt like a fire damage would be minimal because typically, there's not anything, no one living down there, so there probably wouldn't be anything starting, just automatically starting on fire. So, they felt like this was a good idea to get rid of this section. And then the second one is Section 210-8A7, and this is in the NEC, which is the National Electric Code, and this one is talking about the ground fault circuit interruptors, and those are the GFCI outlets. This one is to add in some wording, and this is, this is where they came from on this one. In the NEC, it does require that if your outlet in your kitchen is closer than six feet to the sink, kitchen sink, then it requires to be a GFCI outlet. The GFCI outlets are special outlets that have a sensor in them, and when there's any interruption, any variance in electrical wave, they automatically pop off, and then you have to go push a button to reset it. So they, the board met and they felt like there's a lot of area, or situations where, in a smaller kitchen, where a refrigerator would be located a little bit closer than six feet, so they would require those switches. In doing research on this, they found that many people have problems with these GFCI outlets, they, they're very temperamental, they flip on and off very, or they flip off frequently. So the, the board felt that when people, let's say they go for a three-day weekend, the thing just gets a little wave of something and it flips off, they come home, all their food is spoiled. This, this happens frequently, in fact, one of our electricians said that every time he puts one of those GFCI outlets in for a refrigerator, the people tell him right away, I'm, I'm changing this to a regular outlet as soon as she leaves, and he's like, I didn't hear that? I didn't hear that. So anyway, so that, that's a problem. They felt like it was safe enough for electrical shock because the refrigerator, as it is, is on its own circuit breaker. So if there's a high enough voltage, the breaker would flip and, and that would protect them from shock. So, they felt like this wording, and I'll read what they wanted to add in, and this is under sinks where it requires the GFCI outlet, and basically says that you can't be, if it's closer than six feet from the sink, sink, it requires the GFCI outlet, however, that any non-accessible kitchen receptacle designated for a refrigerator shall not be required to be ground fault circuit interrupter protected. So, they wanted to add in that wording to give people that option, and this is only in the kitchen, this doesn't apply to refrigerators or freezers out in the garage, or anywhere else in the house, just in the kitchen. So, as I mentioned, we brought this before the building, or the Building Safety Board of Appeals, we've discussed this the last few, it's been actually four months we've been discussing this, and they recommend approval of both of the, or both of these items, this amendment, and staff recommends approval as well. If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I make the motion, we approve ordinance 2872-2020.
So, well, it's been moved by Commissioner Sessna to approve the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dick. Any other questions? I just want to say thank you for the information, I think that, and adding this additional information helped, so.
Ditto. I was going to say the same thing, and I, I'm glad that there's a committee out there that just kind of looks at these things and common sense says, this is the way it should be, so, thank you for all of that.
Yeah, I know it takes a lot of time, in four months, that is a lot of time.
It does, and you have to weigh, you know, safety over practicality, and that's sometimes a difficult one for them.
No, thanks for the work. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries four to zero.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, and if approved, it would be resolution number?
2856-2020.
Carol?
Okay, this is to remove two vehicles at the property at 908 Evans Street. There's a gray Chevrolet HHR and then a black pickup. The Chevrolet right there is in the front of the house, the black pickup is in the rear. They both have expired plates, there are some flat tires on the one in the front yard. We, staff has not been able to contact or get ahold of anybody on this property. There are a few other cases that we do have on this property as well, at the same time, so we are asking to the commissioners to approve this resolution to go on to the next step in getting these vehicles removed.
And I know there's a process, and I know that that, that happens, so thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2856-2020.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Ortiz. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Well, they won't.
That's right, that's right.
Item 11A, Mayor and Commissioners, you're asked to consider buy-up options to finalize the Phase 1 guaranteed maximum price for Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. Jennifer?
Did you need to make a phone call, Jennifer, too, or no?
No, we don't actually need to make a phone call. I thought we were going to need to, but I think we're all good, so. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We, this is the next item in the project for Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. We gave you a brief preview that we were going to be discussing this at the meeting today, and so, what's before you is a little bit different than we thought it was going to be, but it's a lot of information, so I'm going to try and go through it piece by piece, and then, once I get done going through that, I'm going to give Barry with McCowen Gordon an opportunity to go through the slides that they prepared, and then I'll kind of wrap it up with, with the last slide that, that staff put together, and then give an opportunity, if there's anybody else who wants to comment, I know that CBB had also planned on coming to the meeting and had a few words to say, and she is here, so, that's awesome. So I'm going to start by telling you that what is before you today is essentially a decision on some buy-up options. They're not things that are required, they're not things that you have to choose to do, they're not currently included in the guaranteed maximum price that was showed to you at the last meeting. However, if they are things that you want to do, they are things that you can buy up today, and would need to be decided today as part of the, the planning and building of the pool structure, the earthwork, and those sorts of things. Not to say that you couldn't do them at some point in the future, but if you did, it would be much more costly, because you would obviously be tearing, tearing out to go back and redo this. So, that's why we're having this conversation today. The first buy-up I want to talk about is a buy-up that has several pieces to it, and that is the structure of the competition pool, or the 50-meter facility that we are putting in. When you, when you guys looked at this project in December of 2019, it had 10 lanes to it. The, the project that you were shown on July 21st, that you approved a guaranteed maximum price for, actually only had eight lanes, and then you saw it had the extended diving well. So, before you today are a couple of options. Option one is, you leave it as is, you leave it with the eight lanes, and you have the extended diving well, and you don't, there is no additional cost to the guaranteed maximum price. Option two is that you could add the two lanes and keep the extended diving well, and that has a cost to it of $359,457. That is the cost to go ahead and do that now. I also broke out for you the 20-year bond cost, because if you remember, back in December, when I went through all of the concept cost out for you, I showed you what those bond cost numbers were, and I thought that was really important, that you could reference back to what that is going to cost us annually if we were to add that to the project. Part of the reason of this, as you can see, it adds 68,500 gallons of water, and that, with that comes different pumps, different piping, and all of the things, not just concrete, not just a little bit of space. So, you'll see that there. There is some important information at the end of, of this part, and I'm just going to read that to you, for anyone who's watching. The importance of this brings the ability to train for short-course events during the summer. While summer is generally seen as a long-course season, most Western Kansas Swim Club meets are held in 25-yard pools. Finney County CBB has expressed an interest in the 50-meter pool having a regulation short-course width to provide opportunities to create and host events for youth adult, youth and adults outside of the normal WKSC summer meet schedule. Currently, the, as drawn, and as you approved on the 21st of July, that facility is a 20, is 21 yards across, the eight lanes is, and so the 10 lanes brings that to a true 25-yards by 50-meter facility. So that, that would be obviously a buy-up for you. The other option for that buy-up would be to say, let's go back, let's go back to what we talked about in December, let's remove the diving well, and let's just go to, go with the 10 lanes. That still has a buy-up cost, and Barry can probably speak to that a little bit more because he can explain why, why there's still a cost there. It is a smaller cost, it's $228,012, and has a 20-year bond cost annually of $13,450. With this, you still provide the, the 25-yard by 50 meters to the competition facility that is requested by both the swimmers and by CBB, and kind of what they, what they were hoping to get out of this facility. You do lose some programming on the side, I guess from staff perspective or from user perspective. We would have to go back to alternating the schedule between diving boards and the flyhides, if you recall. They both cannot run at the same time without that extended diving well. Suggested to us by both, both the design team and the construction company, where that we could potentially run one for an hour and then run the other, and, and kind of flip and flop them back and forth throughout a given day if we didn't want to have one area closed for an entire swim period. So that would be an option, but under that, they, they wouldn't be able to both operate at the same time. So, we are calling that buy-up option, kind of buy-up scenario number one, that has three options to it. The second buy-up option would be increasing the size of the zero-depth entry area and providing a larger play structure with more features, and addition, and an additional side for increased playability. This structure is much larger than the one that we have now, which requires the additional 800 square feet to the zero-depth pool. That's quite a bit of space. 800 square feet is quite a bit of space, as is the size of the play structure. This adds $90,890 to the budget, which is an annual cost on your 20-year bond of $5,350. The importance of deciding this now wouldn't be as crucial if the size of the zero-depth entry pool was there, because you could just go with a larger play structure down the road if the funds were available. If we don't increase the size of that zero-depth entry pool, then putting a larger structure in there is going to become problematic down the road. So that's why, that's, that's why that has become a now decision rather than a down-the-road decision. And Barry will be able to highlight in photographs on his slides exactly what that looks like, so you can have a good picture.
Jennifer, before we move on, sorry.
Yes, no, that's okay.
So, the, option three, just 800 square foot, is that linear foot of 800 square foot, or is that depth and area covered? Can you see what I'm getting at? An 800 square foot house is a footprint of the house?
I do see what you're getting at, and I think that that would be a really good question for us to address when we get to the slide, only because I think the picture does a better job addressing that, and I think Barry can actually point out where the square footage and how that's laid out. Okay, he's shaking his head yes, so we're going to go with that option. So.
He's shaking his head no, we got the wrong guy.
I know, exactly. That's exactly what my next comment was going to be, was, no, I'm, I'm kidding. So, we're going to go ahead and move through this, and then I'll give him an opportunity to address that, and I, I won't forget that. I'll make sure that we do, we do hit that. So, the third buy-up option is choosing a different material for the actual facility itself, so a quartz aggregate rather than an epoxy paint. Epoxy is what we have now, it's what we've had redone a couple of times, I'm sure you guys have heard us talk about it. It's what makes the, the bottom look shiny and new and wonderful every time we, every time we do it, but it is, does have to be done every three to five years. I do want to point out that I was actually really excited for this option, and this was something that I thought would be really great, until I received the letter from Doug, and he explained how to balance the, the, the cost and the life against the fact that we're going to have an empty facility in what could be harsh weather here, and that, that could negatively impact the life of the quartz aggregate, which does play into whether or not it's an actual benefit for us or not. And I think at the end of that, you'll see in his letter that, the final recommendation from him and other pool contractors is that we don't go with the quartz aggregate. But we still wanted to include that in here because I think it is something that the commission should decide, whether or not you guys want to opt to try something like that, or whether or not you want to stick with the epoxy. And, of course, that letter is included with all the pros and cons. So then I just did a, a quick analysis, you know, if you were to choose all three with the 10 lanes and the extended dive well, or if you were to choose all three without the extended dive well, I just put some numbers in there, just so you could kind of see what that looked like. And then, the last and final option that you heard about at the last meeting, and so I wanted to make sure we talked about, was the structure between the old building and the new building, the breezeway. And we talked that through, we talked about that being a buy-up option, and you'll see that there's actually a number, 135,000 in here for it. But as staff and the design team and construction team talked, we realized that we really had time on that, and it wasn't something that needed to happen right now, there, and there might be funds for it somewhere else, or we might come up with a different option, a different design that was more cost-effective. was more cost-effective. And having you all decide that right now just didn't make sense. And so, we wanted to hit on it, so you didn't think that we weren't going to talk about it, because we will at some point in the future. But you don't have to decide that today, and that's not included in any of the alternatives or the pricing buy-up options that are before you today. So, then in my memo, I wanted to go in and just highlight for you, bring you back to December, when we first started having discussions about what concept and what concept costs were, and the additions that were chosen, contingency fees. And you'll see there, you'll see the Concept C had a cost of $11.86 million. The fly high slides came in at $535, and at that point, the Ninja Course was $300,000. And then you'll see the contingency for those add-ons are there as well. So, through this process, I'm sure some of you were thinking, and we'll talk about this a little bit more as we wrap this up, but when the Ninja Course was removed from this project, because it came in the 618 instead of 300, we had what you might say $300,000 that was going to be used towards that Ninja Course. And really, out of that, the design and construction team bred the design that they brought to you on July 21st. So, that 300 was absorbed in creating the extended diving well, adding more shade, doing some of the things that were costly but really needed to happen to get to that design that we got to on the 21st. And so, right now, there's $31,567 under what the concept and the additions were back in December. You are not to, you still, you made a decision on the guaranteed maximum price for Phase One. Phase Two is still coming before you, and then these are going to factor into the buy-up between those two, and we'll add that to the overall project cost, if any of those are selected. So, at this time, I want to jump over to the presentation and give Barry and McCowen-Gordon a chance to talk about their slides, and then I'll come back and walk you through the alternatives that are before you.
Welcome back.
That's right. Yeah, we're glad you're here.
Good to be back. Good to be back. We're still discovering all the good food places.
Yeah, there's a lot. Be careful, yeah. Be careful.
Well, thank you, as Jennifer did, she did an awesome job summarizing this in the memo, and I think it explained very well the different options. But this gives us a better visualization of what it is that's included and what we're proposing. So, the slide that's up here right now is what is reflected in the base. I'm going to call it the base, but this is the guaranteed maximum price that we all brought to you two weeks ago. Eight lanes with the dive well. The rest of the park is still, nothing has changed with that. So, if we could go to the next slide. This is a kind of a 3D rendering of what the current design and current budget reflects. So, following slide, this would be the 10-lane pool, which would give us the 25-meter cross course, or short course, without the dive well. And then, the next slide would also be the 3D rendering of that. And then, the last set would be the combination of the two, 10 lanes plus the dive well. So, much more space in that competition pool for lots of those activities to happen. The next slide, it has all three of them side by side with the costs, and I'll actually let Alan, Alan's our estimator with McCowen-Gordon, he'll kind of explain the dollars and cents.
Good afternoon. As Barry indicated, the three options here, this shows side-by-side comparison of what's changed in the cost associated with each of those. So, the one on the left, that's original. That's what we brought before you on the GMP. As Barry indicated, the next one over is a 10-lane. This does give you, as Jennifer indicated, the 25-yard north and south. So, that is the biggest change there, as well as the dive well going away. Each one of these options does affect multiple things. So, it's the pool itself, its piping, its pumps, its filters, as well as the deck going around the pool, the deck drainage, the earthwork, and the starting blocks. There is an electrical component that is associated with each of these as well. So, that is why you see the cost going up on each option. The last option there, that's the one that Jennifer proposed there with the diving well. That's the largest option. That is the $359,457.
Now, could we take each one of these buy-ups as a separate? It'd be helpful for me, so we can ask questions. Otherwise, if we get them all three going, I think that would be a little bit more confusing. So, when you originally proposed the eight lane, was that to save dollars or costs, or was it to, was there a reason that you proposed the eight, the eight lane, other than just a cost savings?
Yeah, I would actually say it was kind of a holistic perspective. So, we were rightsizing the project to fit the budget. And this was one of those options that was not a great deal of, it didn't feel like we were giving up a great deal of value, because we were getting the dive well to replace the 10 lanes. Maintain the function of the fly high slides plus the diving board. And I think now that we've gotten a little bit more information and understand that the short course or the cross course 25-meter swimming is important to the community, that's definitely a reason why we brought this back to the table.
Any other questions on... I have some additional, but I want to make sure. I'd love to hear from the public before we ask questions, and then you might, I know Roxanne's here, and I think a couple of swimmers, and so that might be really good here from them, and then we'll come back and ask questions. Do you want to do that, or do you want to do it on all of them?
Let's go through their presentation.
Okay.
And then, on the whole, each of them.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
We do have a couple of additional. So, if there's any other questions on...
So, as far as, so when you talked about, as far as the footprint, so that's going to, you're going to have to increase the size of the land size that you had proposed originally now? And so, does that change a lot? You talked about the electrical on those changes, so...
Yes. So, there is associated power and grounding that's needed to serve those pools, the additional size of that pool.
Oh, for the filter. Okay, now, for filtering the ice. I'm sorry.
Yep. And the, yes, water filtration system as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, the starting blocks is another one of those that, where we now have the cross course competition 25-meter, we now need to have starting blocks, not only on the long, on the 50-meter end, but on the 25-meter as well. So, that is included in that cost.
Okay.
I think up next, we have the play structures, and this is that visual. So, this is included, what is included currently in the guaranteed maximum price. The photos on the right are just kind of a representation for scale of, here's about what it's going to feel like. The 3D image on the left obviously gives you a good visualization as well. The next one is the enhanced play structure, a little bit larger, as well as, you can see the size of the pool itself is larger. So, if you go down one more, I think this has a side-by-side comparison to them. I think the biggest thing to note here is that it's like the slice of pie. The slice of pie has gotten larger. So, I think you mentioned something about the depth of it. As we increase the slice of that pie, you're getting all of the depth from the shallow end, from the zero entry, all the way to the depth, to the deepest part.
So, it's more like cubic feet then, instead of...
Yeah, 800 square feet would just be the surface area of the water, which is what they typically measure the pool size in, the surface area. But that, it is getting increase of zero entry, plus kind of that mid and deeper water within that pool as well.
So, if, so if you, now, I'm not saying I'm proposing this or anything, but I'm curious, if you enlarge the size of the pool, could we do the structure later? So, you make all the adjustments, and so, we start with a smaller structure. Is this a structure that we're starting with? Can it be added on to? Or does it have to be, is it an all or nothing?
Yeah, that's a great question. I am not certain, but one thing we would want to make sure of is that all of the rough ends and foundations and piping systems that would be there would be included in that base bed. So, this may not be just a 50% kind of thing. We'd have to analyze what that value would look like. But that certainly could be an option to figure out if that's something that you would want to go ahead and enlarge the pool and just enhance the structure at some point down the road.
Because I know this area is, at our current pool, is highly used. And so, I mean, it's, I mean, I see the value, but I just wonder, I mean, can we, so say we make it, you have the 800 cubic feet, and so we want to do additional things, or something bigger. I just want to make sure we're sizing it properly now, in order that we could do additional things later on.
Yeah, and I believe that's the case. We can confirm that and get that information back to Jennifer and Matt, and make sure that that's communicated.
This isn't our forever pool, because I thought the big pool was forever. But, this isn't our forever pool. But, yeah, close enough.
I will say, in the pools that we have done, and the pools that I've been to, I have small kids, this is where we spend 90% of our time. It's usually the busiest part of the pool.
Yeah, it is.
So, this one does have the cost at the bottom of it, premium of $90,000, fuzz over $90,000 for the square footage addition and the enhanced play structure. That's both of those components together. Jennifer and Doug did talk about the epoxy situation. I'm not sure where the Commission is on that particular item, but I do know that epoxy paint is the predominant surface in most pools in Kansas. In fact, the ones that we've done have all been epoxy paint. We don't have a preference either way, just for kind of an observation. I do know, so again, the pool down the road, next city over, the epoxy paint was preferred there, because city staff was able to self-perform that work. You know, there's, sometimes there's little chips and bubbles and things that happen within that, you know, before the pool needs to be completely repainted. But those are easily done with city staff, and pretty easy to repair in between coatings.
For a, for a facility this size, both the competition pool and lazy river plunge pool and children's pool, what would going through five years from now, doing the epoxy paint, what would that work generally go for?
What would the cost be? We may be able to tell you what it's worth today, and could give you a better idea.
I believe Doug's actually probably answered that best in his write-up.
Yeah.
I saw it in Jennifer. He's got the yearly cost, and then what it would be at the end. Because you do have to, you know, after you've painted it so many times, then you've got to sandblast it and re-coat.
On a lot bigger pool.
So, I know that these are in between, you know, it's sort of in between the next phase or the next. So, how is that going as far as costing? And so, I'm curious about, you know, we've got the initial done, so how's the pricing and everything going on the second, on our second part?
We're in the process right now of scoping trades to find out where that overall cost is coming in, and we'll bring that back to you at a future time. But at this time, we're still, the budget that we presented last time is still where we're at.
So, it's still holding then, so. And you're not, there's no big surprises that you're finding?
No, not that I found. Again, we're just in the process right now of getting that.
Yeah, I'm just curious about how that's going.
But yeah, the budget that we brought to you last time, this still stands.
Okay.
We are in process of gathering subcontractor bids for that second phase. So, we're still compiling and analyzing that information right now. Wish we had more to share on that, because I understand that that would be something you guys would just...
It would help, yeah, it would help us.
Making a decision today. Yeah. We do recognize that, and that's unfortunately one of the pitfalls that we run into with this tiered bid package process, is that unfortunately we just don't have all the information in our hands to be able to share that information with you. Any questions on the epoxy versus plaster? Okay. All right.
Okay.
Any questions on the breezeway? I know that was one of the discussions that was out there.
I think it's a good, I think, yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to have Roxanne come up and talk from CBB's perspective on the different options that are up here. And if she has, I know she's specifically here to talk about the 25-yard versus 50-meter, but if she has anything from CBB perspective on the others, I'd say she can weigh in on those. And then, we'll follow up that with Jennifer Ming and Brian Watkins, whichever one or both of them, if they want to talk to the Commission. I know they're here on behalf of the swimmers.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, I wanted to speak to specifically the 10-lane versus the eight-lane. Obviously, I'm very much in favor of the 10-lane. Having that option, as you know, with a lot of our facilities, we've topped out. The Big Pool was one of them. Obviously, we're not going to be doing casuas sports, because that happens during the school year, but it opens us up to some club sports. It also opens us up to larger regional and national events. So, I want to give you the economic impact of a small event that we hosted with Western Kansas Swim Club. The economic impact to our community for that small event was $50,000. So, as you can see, when you're looking at the bond of $13,000 a year, just a small meet covers the additional cost to the community. That was 551 people in attendance, 381 swimmers, and 105 room nights. So, when you take that and you think about what those 550 people are spending in our local businesses, at the swimming pool, you know, adding to the transient tax, adding to the sales tax, the value to our community of that $300,000 is really a very minimal return on investment. So, it also gives the CBB an opportunity to expand our reach as far as who we're reaching out to, to bring people into the community. More facilities is always good. Like I said, we've topped out, and this is going to be a great opportunity for our community and for our children. When the high school can practice here, maybe we end up then having a college team as well. So, we, I think it's just a good value. As far as the 800 meter, the 800 square feet additional, obviously, anytime we can fit more people in a space, and I know that's not real popular right now, but my job is mass gathering. So, for me, anytime that we can get more people in an area, we have more people, more opportunity and things to offer to people, not only is it a value for our community, but it's a value to our community for the outsiders to come in. Anytime that we're getting sales tax and transient tax, et cetera, from outside, folks, that means we keep our local taxes lower. So, the value is there not only for our residents to use, but it increases the value of our community to the tourist. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you for that. Economic impact, I really appreciate that.
And that's a small tournament. So, this would be in that $75,000 range, I think, minimum, when we enlarge that tournament.
Do you know how many tournaments you'd have the potential at hosting, or, I mean, I know there's no guarantees or promises or anything like that. I'm just curious, are there, so you said it opens you up to other tournaments. Is there any idea about what the potential?
So, I know that there are a couple of regionals that we could host. I know there is also a national that we can look at, and these swimmers could probably answer more specifically to how much they swim. My grandson's a swimmer, and he swims every weekend during the summer. So, I mean, when you look at, well, how many? There's 12, 13 weekends in the summer. The good thing about it is, is I know the parents are sitting at home right now going, but wait a minute, you're going to close down the pool every weekend? No, we wouldn't have to do that with the way the facility is set up. We would be able to still have the public utilize the other side of the pool, and then host an event, so the return on investment is double at that point.
That's great. And I don't know if you know, Jennifer, are there other 50-meter pools with a 25-meter in the area, or would be the only one?
We would be the only one.
Correct. Dodge has eight lanes, and on their new facility that they built a few years ago, five, six years ago, they have eight lanes.
Puts us in a very unique position.
Yeah, it is. Thank you. Any questions for Roxanne? Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Yes. Brian, we'd love to hear from the swimming community.
I can just add what she said on a 50-meter or 25-yard. I think there's only three pools in Kansas that have that, and it's Manhattan, Hutchinson, and there's one in Topeka. Issue is, is we would have a unique position, because we don't have slide structures on one side blocking us from having events, so we could have a 25-yard event. That's pretty huge, because there is no eight-and-under specific meets in the summer. So, we would have something unique to Kansas. We could do eight-and-under, six-and-under, and we could even do a high school-type championship, because they all swim yards. So, in addition to our meet that we host already, that's already three possibilities for statewide meets. And also, this, as of right now, Western Kansas hosts our Invitational and Dodge only, but this would open up definitely taking that meet to Garden instead of Dodge, which is always good, right?
I'm not allowed to, we're not allowed to comment on that. Yeah, that would be, yeah.
On the practice side of that, right now, we practice, when the Big Pool was opened, in three facilities, just because of our different age groups. So, that forces us to have at least six coaches on staff between 7:00 AM to about 1:00 PM every day. If we did have the 25-yard facility, we'd be able to practice every swimmer in Fannie County in one area. So, our team... one, one area. So our team would, instead of being Holcomb, Garden, it would be basically Garden only. Finy County wide, but we'd only practice in Garden. Right now, we're kind of limited to what we can do, because we do practice at the Y, the big pool in Holcomb. And at the Y this year, they won't even let us charge for swimmers to swim this year. They have to swim for free through the high school. So it does increase our opportunities for swimming. And this year, even with COVID, we had our biggest numbers that we've ever had.
I was going to ask.
130 swimmers, and that's the biggest we've ever had, even without any swim meet opportunities. So I can only see it growing. And then giving that 8 and under local meet will actually be a huge benefit, because we've never had that before. If 8 and under wanted to swim, they'd have to go to a short course facility somewhere else, because you can't host summer meets at the Y. It's just not big enough. I mean, it just increases a lot of opportunity for us. We could practice in a two to three hour period instead of a six hour period. I mean, high school would practice there as well.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah.
I mean, it's a lot of opportunities for our local teams. And then also, just because of the COVID, next year, most of our summer pool, most of our summer meets are actually indoors, believe it or not, if you go outside of Western Kansas. So all your 50-meter pools are indoor meets. And, but with the COVID, they're pushing an outdoor, you know, initiative. So next year, most of our meets will probably be pushed outdoors, and we'll have the nicest facility in Kansas if we have this set up, so. But that's pretty much all I have.
No, thank you. No, yeah, that adds tons of value. How many of the 25-meter across, how many lanes will they have? I was going to ask that, and that's the question I forgot to. Because I know if you added the diving well, you can't use that, but I'm saying, how many across?
I believe it's eight lanes, but I'm not sure.
Eight lanes across?
Not sure if the confluence are in there. Let me show that.
If it did, it's so small.
Might be six off of that picture, despite the program of the whole area has the rise back in the pool, which probably takes the dive well out of the 7 to 8 lane starting block. Just from that picture is all of everyone.
That is an engineer, the rendering, that you can somewhat see the lines.
So how many was it? Six lanes across?
If that's accurate, yeah, there's six lines, whether those are actual.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't, yeah, okay. Yeah, if you want to come to mic, that way we can, yeah. That way everybody can hear it. Yes, please, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. That way everybody can hear you. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Ming. I coach the girls' high school team and one of the coaches for the Blue Tide. And I guess the only thing that I would add is, well, I guess you mentioned it. I mean, our program is really growing, like, we're really doing some really great things. So we're just, and I would hate to, like, with everything that we've ever done, it's like, I wish we would have done it this way. So this would be our opportunity to do it the way that we would really like it done the first time, and then we just wouldn't have to go back and, or we can't go back. So it would just be good to do it right the first time.
Well, congratulations on your program. I mean, that's tremendous, so, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a question for the design team. The lap lanes, the lap lines, probably, nobody puts the big schools on the pictures, but that's a reality, because the lap lines aren't going to be there when it's programmed.
Correct.
And I would imagine you have two sets of lap lines. You have those for the 50-meter. If you get a 25-yard, you're going to have those for the 25-yard, and maybe not just the competition ones, but the practice line, lanes, which go 80% of the length. That's a, that's a lot of.
Lot of lines.
Lot of lines. A lot of schools, a lot of, where, where do those get housed in an outdoor facility, just along the fence line?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I'm not, I defer to Terry, but he's not here today, so. Well, that's a question that we can't follow up with Terry on, is where they propose to store those lines. A lot of the ones that we see are just pushed up against the fence somewhere, and sometimes they build in a little enclosure around them just to hide them, so you know.
To keep them from getting weathered, too.
Yeah, because, yeah, the weather just beats those things out.
Control kids running around them and hiding behind them, those kinds of things. So that is something we will follow up with you guys on to determine where those are, be proposed to be stored, in this image.
Okay, I agree. There's going to be, there's going to be some work. I mean, that's no small feat, especially if you're doing, setting it up for practice and then tearing it down every day for the programmability of the middle of the pool. Well, or the western two-thirds. It's going to have to be cut out of system and place. There, no doubt, the swimmers are the labor. I mean, they take them across, but, but it doesn't stop when you get in the water or begin to take them out of the water, spoon them up and move that to work, to wherever. And just thinking about the logic of the fence line and the quantity of concrete surface, now's the time to figure out.
That's good.
If we've got adequate space, so.
Be able to accommodate those now.
I do know the diving well, so I, and I should have, and I don't know if it's in here, and if it was, I didn't read it. How deep, somebody asked me how deep it was, and I thought you said 15 feet, but I can't remember if that's right or not.
So the.
The diving well, if you add that, how, what's the depth on it?
It is 15 feet.
Okay.
It's not.
12 foot 6.
I should love this guy.
12 foot 6, okay.
12 foot 6 is the furthest he's been.
So that's, when you pull the diving well, I'm sorry, when you pull the diving well out, it's that, that part, that's a 12 foot 6, you said?
Correct.
And what was ours? Was ours 11 or something? I can't remember.
Ours was 100 foot deep.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't deep enough, yeah.
I don't know for sure off the top of my head. I'd have to go out there and look, but.
So really, you don't, you're not making the diving well any deeper, you're just extending it out? Okay. Any other questions, commissioners, or anything that we need to, any clarifications?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to run to the last side, which has your alternatives on it. If you do have any additional questions before we make a decision, we can get these guys back up here, or anybody else that you want to ask, if they're around. If they're not around, we'll try and get you an answer. But, so the way that this is laid out, and I'm, and I'm going to highlight a couple of things here. So for review, the numbers that I gave you in the memo, which were the numbers that were just cited on back in December, and part of which you've seen where the bid package number one and number two were at on July 21st. We also put a note in there about the Ninja Course, in case you forgot about that. There's, there's your reminder. And then your pass. And the way that we did this is we added the, so option one is the 10 lanes plus a dive well for the $359,457. And then you have option two, 10 lanes without the dive well. Option three, which is the additional 800 square foot zero-depth entry pool, plus the larger play structure. Four is the courts aggregate and interior pool finish. When you get to number five, this is if you were to do the three, three buy-up options, the courts, the play structure, and the 10 lanes with the diving well. And option six is the same thing without the diving well. And then option seven is for you to create your own scenario of buy-ups, if that's two of those that are not listed, not listed together. And we'll figure out the cost of that, and I'll work with Melinda to add that and do all of the work that's necessary, and make sure that you see that number when we do your guaranteed maximum price on bid package two. I'll make sure that that's noted for anyone who's watching. And then option eight is just, let's not do any of the buy-ups. Let's leave it exactly like it is from July 21st, and let's plow on down the road and move forward. So. Any questions about any of your options? Any questions from programming stance, or from operations standpoint, or anything, anything of that nature?
So most of these numbers, Jennifer, are they, have you got actual bids in from contractors? I guess this would be a question for the design team, or?
On these buy-ups?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a question for Alan.
Yeah, that's, that's what we worked through between last meeting and now.
Okay.
Those costs.
So these, these are the subcontractors' bids?
Yes.
These are firm, okay.
And the reason we're asking for them now is because it affects the trade partners that are starting right now.
Thank you. I mean, as usual, incredible amount of great information and lots to, almost too much to, you know, make, I mean, really valuable decisions on. But I am struck by Jennifer Ming's comment that, you know, let's build what we, let's build, let's build now for the future, and I think that's really, makes the difference. So. Any, any questions or any, is there a motion someone would like to start with?
I'd like to make a motion to option number seven, do a combination of one and three.
I'll second that.
What is that in words?
So that's the buy-up with the.
The buy-up with the 10 lanes plus the dive well, and then option three would be the additional 800 square foot of the larger play structure.
Leaving, leaving the pool surface with the epoxy.
Yes, leave that out.
I would like to see if we could add, I mean, if we could do the play structure now and then add on, but if that's not viable and we just need to do it, that's my only caveat to that, but. So let's remove it in a second, and do we have a, do we have any further discussion? Yeah, I seconded, I'm sorry. Did you get it? I'm sorry. See, man. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we got a 10-lane pool and a diving well, and a big play structure.
Thank you.
Now if you could just cover it.
I'm sorry, that's the next hundred years. Thank you so much. Thank you, Roxanne. Thank you. Brian, thanks, Jennifer, for coming.
I think we're ready for 12A.
Okay.
The governing body is asked to consider an approved funding awarded under the FY2020 Federal Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Fund through the Kansas Governor's Grant Program in the amount of $22,200. Chief Utes, I believe, this is your presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. As Matt said, that we, we did apply for a grant through the Kansas Governor's Grant Program in the amount of $22,200. The grant was to buy some equipment related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The Governor's Grants Program has awarded funding in the amount of the $22,200. And although the Police Department applied for this grant, we're using this fund citywide to purchase 12 portable hand sprayers and four large backpack models of electrostatic disinfectant sprayers. If you haven't seen them, what you do is you fill the disinfectant up. A school district has them, and they, you spray whatever areas that may have been affected, and it wraps around computers and everything else and access immediately. So we're, the grants to purchase that as well as some disinfectant, and then we will distribute the equipment throughout the city. This is a no-match grant by the city. This is the second COVID grant that the Police Department applied for. So we're asking, the alternative is to approve the grant, the funding awarded through the Governor's Grant Program, or reject it. And obviously, we're recommending to approve the fund awarded through the Kansas Governor's Grant Program.
I make the motion that we approve the funding awarded through the Kansas Governor's Grant Program for this project.
So Commissioner Sessna makes the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Dick seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you for looking for these, and also for the way in which you are, I mean, being awarded, it says you're doing really great work, so. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Pardon me? Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a change order for the body worn cameras and in-car camera system with Motorola Solutions, Inc., to include new five-year licensing and back office digital evidence management system agreements. Chief?
Thank you, Matt. In 2017, the Police Department completed a three-year research project by testing several body worn cameras. On December 19, 2017, the governing body approved a five-year contract, interest-free bid contract with Motorola Solutions for $446,942. And this was to purchase 64 body worn cameras, 32 in-car cameras, system training, storage, for storage per 250 gigabytes, storage per body camera for first year, and additional 50 gigabytes of storage for the next four years, and unlimited car camera cloud storage. On July 1, 2018, the Police Department went live with the body worn camera system, and every sworn officer was issued body worn cameras. The camera system has been a great asset in capturing evidence, documenting officers and individuals' actions, oriented actions, as well as protecting members of the Police Department from false allegations. It has been a good asset for us, and we have been able to save a lot of resource by using this. Motorola used a third-party vendor for the in-car camera system. Motorola worked with the Police Department staff on several occasions in attempts to deliver the in-car camera system, and the system that Motorola provided and tested by the Police Department did not meet the specifications required by the contract. Motorola made several attempts to remedy the in-car camera system to no avail. Motorola has been really a great partner in this program. They really worked hard with this. And on July 11, Motorola announced they had acquired WatchGuard, Inc., and WatchGuard is one of the industry leaders in body worn cameras and in-car camera systems. We did test WatchGuard back when we did their research, but they didn't have cloud storage and some other things that weren't meeting our specifications, and they've now upgraded and are meeting the specifications. So Motorola decided to discontinue the Motorola body worn cameras and move forward with the WatchGuard system with the new back office system and cloud-based storage. Motorola continued to have an open dialogue with the staff at the Police Department on remedying the issues at hand. Personnel at the Police Department have tested the WatchGuard body worn camera systems, in-car camera system, and back office evidence system. The Police Department found in the testing that the WatchGuard system meets the law enforcement standards for the equipment, as well as what is expected by the Police Department for use now and in the future. Motorola has submitted a attached change order, which has been reviewed by the city attorney Randy Griselle. The change order to the original contract, which is a $0 change order, includes the items listed, 32 in-car cameras, for which, for which have already been installed and are working very well for us. The remaining 28 would be scheduled for installation. They are giving us 68 body worn cameras. Originally, the contract was for 64, and we have a supplemental contract which has been voided out. And then there are also, the current body worn cameras also connect to the portable radios and act as a microphone. So Motorola is even a better partner by offering us pre-68 replacement microphones to go with the system. They're providing a unlimited cloud storage on body worn cameras, as well as in-car cameras, and the City of Garden City is not responsible for paying payments from the 2018 and 2019 for the body worn cameras. Five-year agreement was started upon the system, accepts that new WatchGuard, and a full warranty for five years. Alternatives are to accept the change order to the five-year bid contract as presented or rejected the agreement and direct staff to research an alternative. Staff recommends alternative one, for the governing body to accept the change order to the five-year bid contract. On a fiscal note, funding for body worn cameras and in-car cameras for 2020 is $90,000, and it isn't our budget. $90,000 will need to be budgeted each year for '21, '22, '23, and '24 is already in the 2021 budget. The $90,000 that was budgeted for years 2018 and 2019 has been placed in GL Account Fund 5, as approved by the city commissioning the adoption of the 2021 budget. These funds will be used, have been reallocated, used for equipment for the new building, for the evidence, and remodeling the law enforcement.
I had a question on the data. So is the data, so I know it's accessible by you, but do you, does the City of Garden City actually own the data, and then they only store the data, or do they actually have that rights and access to it also, Motorola?
They do not have access to it. We own the storage. We're paying for the storage on the cloud, but we own all rights to it.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure on that.
I make the motion we approve the change order as presented.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Sessna. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Ortiz, second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Chief, for working with him and for keeping, really sticking with this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a proposal for architectural services at 310 North 7th Street. Actually, I need to go. I just sent Jennifer to a, to a different task.
I thought I saw her get up.
Yeah, she's on the other side.
She's coming slowly.
I do want to note that Commissioner Ortiz has stepped away from the bench for this.
And Matt, I didn't quite get a chance to ask.
That's okay.
Okay, I was panicking. Mayor and Commissioners, and I was panicking so much I brought the wrong notes. So before you is the issue of consideration and approval of proposal for architect services on 310 North 7th Street. We came before you and asked now twice to do an RFP process in which the first time I failed to meet the notice requirements. The second time went much more smoothly. We did post that to our website and I did email it out to local architects. I had several inquire, both in town and out of town about the project. Provided a lot of different information by email. And at the end of the process, we did receive three proposals. The first one is from, Matt, if you could scroll down just a little bit. Sorry. The, the first one is from Rich Design Architects out of Minnesota. And I put this one first on here because it, when we went through the proposals, it was definitely the least detailed. The, the proposal, the fee amount was based off of a $4 million budget for this project, which as, thank you. Which as you all know, on this particular project, we are trying to stick to a very low budget. We are trying to make as few changes in municipal court side as possible and using really low-cost options on both sides in order to move this along because you all have realized that the evidence portion of this is very important. And important that we do it quickly and as close to a budget as possible. And so that was the first thing on the Rich Design Architect that caused staff some concern. Additionally, on that proposal, it, it looked to be a $400,000 fee and then a $44,000 fee. We weren't able to determine between those two things which one it actually was. And finally, to follow that up, obviously with the format of Minnesota, there are reimbursable expenses for travel that could become very costly on a project like this for traveling back and forth. Especially when we had two local firms that were, that were also in the proposal process, so. The, the second one that we have here is from the architect. And Mr. Glass and Mr. Ortiz both went through the facility with myself. And we went over all the logistics, the budget, the planned budget by staff and, and that sort of thing. As you all are aware, I did provide you some additional information from Mr. Glass through email prior to this meeting. He did reach out after the packet came out and we had a discussion about the project and he wanted you to have some supplemental information. And I have additional copies of that as well. The, the project budget here, if you all remember, and I did put it in my memo, is $1.318 million. And that was based off of a purchase price of $480,000. And then in addition to that, a renovation cost of approximately $800,000 to $900,000. And we realize that that means that there may be things that we're not able to do right away. And there may be things that we have to patch and, and repair and replace down the road. But we're trying to do our best to get these two facilities up and, and running together. So in this, what Mr. Glass put together was a proposal that, that detailed projects like the O-Rate Gymnastics Facility and the Grant County Bank. And I thought both of those were really nice examples in comparative to our projects. A little bit higher budgets, but they were definitely good comparisons. At the end of that, he provided a fee that was a not to succeed in their proposal. And the additional information he provided was that that was 7% of what he believed the, the actual project cost to be. And, and, and his, his thought process is, is that our project would be a much higher cost per square footage. And, and it's hard to determine that too as we go through this because as he notes and as I have noted to all of you, the city does intend to self-perform some of, some of the things in the building that will hopefully keep some of those costs down. The third proposal is from Gibson, Mancini, Carmichael, and Nelson. And they also went through the facility with their engineers. And I did not go through with them on that tour. However, I did have a couple of conversations with them. And they actually have drawings of the facility from previous work that they had done. And so I was able to see those drawings as well. And they're very close to what the building looks like right now, which would give, would make it a little bit quicker to get the design ready to go for us to move on the facility. The, the projects that they had done at the Garden City Fire Department, the Regional Airport, and the Community College Bookstore, especially the bookstore, I felt like, were really good comparisons to our project about a renovation and, and project budget. So I thought those were nice. They, they, again, were a little bit higher in cost than we intend to be on our project, but still very good. And they too provided a not to exceed fee. And theirs was based off of the project budget that I gave them. And you noted in their letter that, that was $800,000. And so those are the three that we received and the three that staff analyzed as part of this memo and for you all today. And our recommendation is to choose Gibson, Mancini, Carmichael, and Nelson as the architect, for the architectural services at 310 North 7th Street. I'm happy to answer any questions about those proposals or the selection process that staff went through or anything else that you would like us to do. So the options before you are to select the architect, to select Gibson, Mancini, Carmichael, and Nelson, to select Design Rich, or not select any of these proposals and provide me with additional direction as to how you want to proceed.
I'll make the motion that we select Gibson, Mancini, Carmichael, Nelson for the architectural services at 310 North 7th Street.
So it's been moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been seconded. So any further discussion? And so I just want to, yeah, I appreciate the, the travel costs and I'm grateful that we had two firms who actually do really great work in our area. I'm looking at the, I'm sorry. Matt, can you scroll back up to the, the architect to their? I'm missing their final cost and I can't find it.
It would be, Matt, in their proposal, it would be on about the second or third page.
I just wanted to make sure. I was going to look at this before. Okay, I, I found it. I just wanted to make sure and check that. Okay, if there's no further discussions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Ortiz has rejoined the commission and we are on to item, new business, item D.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve to sell a surplus substation transformer to Stockton, Kansas for $202,084. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The City of Stockton, Kansas had their main substation transformer fail back on June 25, 2020. That serves their entire community. They were able to run their generation plant to provide power to the community while they were trying to find a transformer. They contacted several transformer manufacturers and bester own utilities, co-ops, and municipalities. And Garden City was the, we had a transformer that met their needs, both in the voltage and the size and the KVA and then the actual physical size of the unit. Our transformer came from the substation we dismantled at Harding and Campus quite a while back. That transformer was cleaned up and put back into, into the yard. We have no intention, we had no intention of using it. We don't need that transformer on our system anymore. So it worked out well. We did allow the City of Stockton, we shipped the transformer up the next day on Saturday, put it in service. And they were able to shut their generators off later that evening. And it's been working perfectly fine for the City of Stockton ever since. They, of course, they did their due diligence on whether to rebuild their other transformer or whatever the case may be. They've made their request back to Garden City if we would sell them this transformer. One, it's already in service. It's already, it's a little bit larger than what they need, so it allows for some growth. And so they're, they're interested in purchasing that. So we went ahead and did an analysis on what that transformer is worth. We, the transformer, we did a, well, I'll get into that in the financial part here in a second. But the transformer that we're asking permission to sell to them is, be worth $202,084. The transformer's $184,271. The taxes on the unit that we'd have to charge is $15,663. And then the transportation that, we already paid to have that transformer hauled up to Stockton that day. It was $2,150. This is a little out of the norm because the Financial Management Guidelines Purchasing a Contract Manual says that we can, surplus equipment, we can transfer it to another department. And if no other department wants it, then we can sell it to the general public. And it's just not something that, no, anyone's going to buy it. But it's a large enough value and out of the norm that we wanted to bring it to, bring it to the commission to officially decide and make sure it's okay. We did check with the Kansas Municipal Utilities and the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency to see if there's any other municipalities that would be interested. And no one has spoke up to say that they were interested in that transformer. Two options. One is authorize a sale or number two would be do not authorize it. We recommend alternative one. Little bit of history on the transformer. We purchased it back in 1988 for $230,000. We can't find the actual purchase requisition at that time. For whatever reason, I don't know, we don't, didn't, we couldn't find it. But we did find how much we paid for it. We had that transformer worked on in 2009. That was $180,096. And then when we took it out of service and put it in storage, we paid that, that prep charge to have it prepared to be put into storage of $11,776. So working with the Finance Department, we use the fixed asset policy that requires we use a straight-line 40-year depreciation schedule on those figures. They're there. We're happy to walk through if you want me to. Basically, though, the depreciation value of the transformer is $184,271. The second repair was worth, the taxes, I'm sorry, was worth $15,663. And then the transportation was $2,150. And that's how we come up with the $202,084. We, we did check with the manufacturer who we ordered the very large transformers for, for the asset purchase agreement. And their estimate was the transformer of this size would cost somewhere around $225,000. Should you approve this, then the proceeds for this would go into the electric budget under miscellaneous revenues. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Were they asking now, they're asking for any contingencies like a warranty or anything like that? They're just saying they're going to buy it outright and then basically it's theirs and we have no repair or promises after that, so.
True. It, it is as is where is.
Okay.
And we'll have a, we'll have a actual statement drawn up that they'll have to, when we invoice them for that, if you approve this. And then they'll have to sign that.
Yep, that's my only question I had, sir.
I'll make the motion we approve the sale to Stockton for the transformer.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Sessna. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Ortiz, seconds. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
It's a great sale.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a second amendment to the development agreement for Chapel Heights Third Edition to amend Exhibit E eligible costs. Carol?
Good afternoon again. This Chapel Heights III is a part of the RHID program. And so they do receive incentives or tax rebates basically when they get their houses in, which helps to pay the infrastructure costs that they incur when they put the development in. The third addition of Chapel Heights, they've run into a few problems with their stormwater. And that has kind of added into their financing. And then also they want to, they've had some costs that they weren't expecting for sidewalks. So all of these three items are on their eligible costs, basically saying, this is, these are the items and this is the amount of money that we could get in rebates with, through the, through the RHID program. However, it's not guaranteed. It's only if, if they get that enough revenue made. So these three areas, they'd like to request to amend, to change these amounts. They'd like to change the, let me get my page here. The stormwater, it was set at $95,340. They'd like to up that to $200,000. That's a difference of an addition, an additional $104,660. The sidewalk eligibility or the amount in that one started out at $36,250. They want to add or increase that to $80,000 and that increases, that increase would be $43,750. The financing line, they would like to add that or increase that from $50,000 to $65,000, which is an additional $15,000. All of these eligible costs increase their total amount to $163,410. And as I mentioned, this is not necessarily meaning they're going to get this much more, more, more money back, but they have the opportunity to. And I do want to mention that we did talk with the developer about the feasibility study because this will in, in turn make that original feasibility study that they did saying, well, you know, if you put in this many houses at this price, you're going to get this much rebate. We let them know, well, this is going to increase that, your cost quite a bit, so you might not get all of this back. They understood that. They were okay with that. I did point out to them that their original cost that they had down for their houses was $220,000 a unit. They're getting a lot more than that for their houses. So that should kind of make up for the, the difference in this, in this request to increase their eligible costs. So with that, staff does recommend approval. All this is doing is, you know, making them eligible to get the rebate on this extra money that they put in. And if you have any questions, you're certainly
No, I was going to say, I appreciate the comparison. That was really helpful to understand. So if not, I'll, I'll call for a motion.
I move that we approve the second amendment to Chapel Heights Third Edition Development Agreement as proposed.
So Commissioner Dick moves that we approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Sessna. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks.
Item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve entering into a 10-year agreement with PGV Fiber LLC from Ulysses, Kansas to construct a fiber optic communications network in and around the City of Garden City and to provide dedicated use by and service to the City of the same. Mike?
Good afternoon again. A little bit of background on this. PGV Fiber was issued a franchise agreement to construct and maintain a telecommunications system in Garden City by the governing body on July 21, 2020. Phase one of their planned build-out would, would connect the City Administration Center, this building, the LEC and the fire station to their point of presence, which is at the Garden City Community College. That's where Pioneer has their big equipment that interconnects their system from all over. This connection will allow an enhanced communication traffic on all existing and future fiber links to city facilities that would feed out of here. And right now, you know, with IT being here, pretty much everything comes out of this building. PGV Fiber plans to construct this phase and have it operational by December 31 of 2020. They've got all the material. They have their contractor in place. The associated costs with the agreement are structured with an upfront capital costs for the city share of the capital expenses associated with phase one. There again, construction to be completed by December 30. Per fiber expense charged during the life of the initial 10-year agreement for phases two through five and an annual reoccurring maintenance fee for the life of the initial 10-year term. And then subsequently approve five-year extensions, should we choose to do that, if this gets approved the first go-round. Your alternatives would be to approve the agreement with PGV Fiber LLC or do not approve the agreement. Staff recommend Staff recommends alternative one. And then under the fiscal note is, the upfront cost of this agreement is two hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. This is budgeted in the two thousand and twenty general fund capital expense for the information technology department. The city will seek reimbursement through the spark funds distributed to and allocated by Finney County as they directly relate to improving communications capabilities of the city administrative center, the LEC, and fire station one. Per fiber annual maintenance fees and per fiber annual capital expense charges related to the build-out of phases two through five are assessed over the life of the initial agreement. They would begin at twenty thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars per year, and increase to forty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-five per year. Those costs will be assessed to the departments in however much they use or how much they need. So that's how those costs will be assigned. And Casey Krueger is here at PCB Fiber. If you had, PGB Fiber, I'm sorry, if you had any questions of him, otherwise I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
So I want to make sure I understand. So the dark fiber, they have the fiber routes, those are dedicated fiber that we, the city, have just for our use. Is that correct?
Yes. If we would go with dark fiber, that means it's fiber that they don't light up, and that we could, we'll put our own equipment on, and we can use those. That's correct.
And they, and they're anticipating all of this done by December thirty-first so that it would qualify for the sparks? Is that correct? Also, Mike, I'm just...
Yes, they have to have it done by December thirty-first.
For phase one and phase five.
Phase one and phase five will be done by the end of the year.
Okay. Casey, did you want to say anything? And if you can, if you want to come to the mic, that's great, so we can, that way everyone, everyone can hear you as we're recording.
I don't think I have anything additional to add. Matt, if you want to pull up that map. So what we're working on is, and what we've been planning for is, for two thousand and twenty to accomplish our phase one and phase five, which is the yellow and purple routes.
Okay.
Coming south and west down Fulton, and then north and south down Main Street.
And that's the amount that we're going to be using to qualify for sparks?
Correct. Correct. Your portion will be for phase, phase one, the yellow portion. That two hundred and thirty-one thousand is your portion of that that will apply, or you will apply for spark funding.
I make the motion. We approve the agreement with PGB Fiber LLC.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Dick. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Casey.
Mayor and Commissioners, item twelve G, the governing body is, is asked to consider and approve a proposal from PGB Fiber LLC to construct a fiber-optic communication line to Garden City Regional Airport.
Yes, this is a, just a kind of an adder to the, what you just agreed to. This is a separate agreement. The Garden City Regional Airport has a city-owned, is a city-owned and operated facility that has long struggled with adequate communications infrastructure. This was most recently exposed during the COVID-nineteen response. The city, over the years, has invested, we've investigated numerous options, recently explored alternative construction and service build-outs, options with other people and with PGB Fiber LLC as part of the discussions concerning how we could get up there and around Garden City. The attached proposal titled Option One, a complete build included phase one would cost five hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-two cents, and will be completed in conjunction with the phase one of the fiber build-out, also being considered by the governing body that you just approved. The necessity for fast and reliable communications between GCK and the emergency responders and other city departments in the event of an emergency is critical. The added infrastructure will also greatly enhance daily operations for the municipal airport staff and the rest of the airport community, now as the facility grows and with the construction of a new regional terminal. Alternatives would be to approve the proposal from PGB Fiber LLC in the amount of five hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-two cents, or do not approve the proposal. Staff recommends alternative one. Fiscal note, this is an unbudgeted item. Excuse me. Staff proposes initially paying for the project from a reserve fund of the community trust fund and seeking reimbursement through spark funds as the airport communications infrastructure was identified as an emergency response liability. Given the broad benefit that would come from this type of improvement, if spark reimbursement is not approved, staff recommends repaying the fund using, used to initially pay for the expense over three to five years for future operational and general airport operating funds. And there again, Casey's here if you should have any questions, but I can answer anything you may have.
I make the motion. We approve the proposed proposal from PGB Fiber LLC in the amount of five hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-two cents.
So it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Dick. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. I guess it's time to go to work on that.
Item twelve H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an application for emergency loans using community development block grant economic development revolving loan funds held by the city. Let me call that up. When this is in here, I'll go ahead and take care of this one. Information had been provided to us by the Economic Development Corporation. They have, as you well know, since the spring, been soliciting interest, and we had dispersed all of our community development block grant revolving loan funds, but have begun receiving back. And so that fund now has sufficient capacity to consider another loan. The, the application before you is for Thang Asian Market LLC, and staff would recommend approval. I think the Development Corporation has some information here. If you'll remember right, the terms of these loans for COVID-nineteen response were a half a percent interest rate. The maximum loan amount was thirty-five thousand dollars, maximum term, three years, and the first year maybe interest-only payments. And indeed, their, the request on the part of the applicant is for thirty-five thousand dollars. I'll make the motion to approve the following application for emergency loans using community development block grant for the revolving loan funds.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Dick. All those in favor say, oh, sorry, any further discussion? I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Great. Thank you. So do you want to finish with the executive session?
Yeah, we'll finish with the executive session, which is item twelve I, we don't anticipate any actions necessary following that. So the consent agenda, if you don't wish to pull any of the items off and talk about them separately, would be the approval of items twelve J, one through three.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
So it's been moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, with that, we're ready for commission reports. Commissioner Ortiz, you get to go first today, so you could cover everything, and then we just have to...
No, I'll leave it all out for you guys. Thank you. Yeah, just great work today, great work in the past couple of weeks to get us to this point. So I appreciate all of that from staff to get us all the information that we need to make some decisions. The Big Pool was, was one that we don't anticipate having an answer, right, when we come up here. Sometimes it's just, we love having people in the community come and talk about it, it kind of help us gauge where we, you know, where we feel are comfortable at with making the decisions. So thanks for the community on, coaches to come up and talk about that as well. So I also like to bring up the census again, too. Just, it's, it's very important. We had a pre-meeting today that kind of highlighted some hot topics on, on where we would be at with some of this funds coming in from the government and paybacks and payoffs from, from what we would get per person, and I think it was about two hundred and twenty-five or two hundred and ninety-nine, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars a person that we would get refunded from, for a lot of this COVID buyout program. So, or not buyout program, but anyways. So it's very important that everybody in Garden City be accounted for. Just because we miss, if we were like ten thousand or fifteen thousand people short, we miss a lot of that money. And it's, so like I said, it's very important to get on the census and, and register so that you are accounted for and you are one of the community members. So it's very important that you do that. Also, go and vote today for new electives and the seat. So go out and vote. Today's the last day to get, to get there. I'm the last, I'm the last, like, voter, so I get there right before the doors close.
I bet they loved you.
They lock the doors behind me when I leave. I like that. But, so go out and vote. Also, just some great things coming up in the community as well. I know it's hard. I was at a meeting yesterday for VAA at the college, and, and the college is down like thirty percent in enrollment. So just figuring out, you know, they're figuring out ways to, you know, get people involved and to really still donate, because a lot of student athletes, they, they depend on those scholarships. And it's kind of tricky because, well, a lot of people are saying, well, we can stay home if we're going to be online. So why go out of state and I still have to be online to take the class, because some of those classes aren't open? So Garden City Community College offers, you know, online, so you can stay home. They offer open classes, so you can go and take classes and enroll in classes. So, but just to help the enrollment, there is, is a need. So if you are looking to go to college or, or staying home this year because of COVID, look at Garden City Community College. So like I said, they're down thirty percent of enrollment, but, but we need your support, and if, if we can get everybody involved, that's, that's wonderful. So I think that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dick?
Well, you did cover basically everything. So, same thing, vote, remember to vote. It's primaries. Remember to get your census in. I mean, it's, it does make a direct impact of our budget, like we saw with the spark funding. And then also, just thanks to the pre-meeting and getting all that stuff together, it really shows how good our city staff is, where they can get underneath a kind of a crunch on time and still be able to come out with, making sure we get the things that need to get funded, funded. And part of that's just the, the great consultants that the county brought in to facilitate that process. So thank you to the county for bringing those guys in and making sure we get those funds out to the places that need them. But that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I just echo what the other commissioners stated is, if you haven't filled out your census yet, please do so. It's vitally important for our community and region. Like they said during our pre-meeting, it shows, you know, when we do get reimbursements, they do use that off the census. So it is vitally important that you fill out your census. The other thing is to, yes, go vote. If you've been watching on the news, when you vote, you vote in people that lead and guide not only your community, but the county, as well as the state and the nation. In some places, there are concerns about how people are leading their communities and counties and states, and sometimes people question about how they're leading the nation. So it is important. It's one of our constitutional rights, and it's vital that you go out and make your voice be heard on who will be leading in the, in the years to come. So please go vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sessna. Yeah, I just want to just echo again, I think, you know, in primaries, lots of times the primaries are some things that, you know, this is, this is something that we have to pay attention to. So primaries do make a difference. This is one of those years that will make a big difference. I just, I want to also, I want to say I've had a lot of comments on the groundbreaking and just the pictures of, there's a lot of excitement around Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. There was a different name on it, someone, I didn't even notice, so, but it's Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. I also, I just want to say thank you to the staff and for the sparks, the presentation today, and then the opportunity we had to hear about opportunities that we can get reimbursed and to really help our community grow strong. I want to say also this idea of shopping local. I've been able to make three or four recommendations this week. People say, hey, I can't find, I can't find this, and make recommendations to local shops. A lady walked away with two pairs of shoes from a local shop. I won't mention that. But she was super excited. She tried online and was very displeased, and had to send everything back. And so she shopped local, and she was really excited about that. Last thing I want to mention, I was able to read some Sandra Boynton books at the Public Library for We Readers. I think I had more fun, well, it was taped. So I was talking to myself, I guess, but had a blast reading the books. Had three viewers, so I'm expecting all the rest of you commissioners to sign up. But it was really a lot of fun to just read some books and have some fun at the library. They are really trying to make the library something that's usable. And they've got lots of really great programs where they can give away books in many different languages, which was really fun to see. Just took a brief tour of the library, but they are still doing things. They're really doing some neat things. And having a library in our community, the quality of library in our community that we have, I'm really excited about. So I do want to thank the staff, especially for the preparation for this meeting. The pool continues to be outstanding work. I appreciate the people who come from the, from McAllen Gordon to really talk about, it matters that they come and present. And, you know, we're making these decisions. I am excited to see the public come out and saying, hey, these are things that are important to us. And Roxanne's presentation from the Convention and Visitors Bureau was excellent as always. So I want to just say thank you, and we are looking forward to our next meeting.
All right. Mayor and Commissioners, one other item, and that's an executive session. We would need to take about, I would say, five minutes before we start to get an attorney joining us by phone. But the appropriate motion would be to go into an executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five, four thirty-one, nineteen B two pertaining to consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and for the specific purpose of contractual obligations. And I would ask that in addition to the commissioners present, that I be in attendance, and that Mary Carson join us by phone.
And then how long, Matt, do you, would you like the executive session to last?
Oh, thank you. Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. Commissioner Sessna, would you mind making that motion?
Make a motion that we go into an executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three, nineteen B two pertaining to consultation with an attorney for body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship on contractual obligations, which we would also have city manager Alan and counsel Mary Carson. And we'll start at two fifty-five and go for twenty minutes.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Two fifty-five?
Two fifty-five.
Because they had, he said five minutes to get the phone...
Does that work?